I call to all the meeting in Pasadena, Penn State School District Board of Trustees in regular session on Tuesday, August 27, 2019, and the boardroom administration billing 1515 Chair Book Pasadena, Texas at 5:30 PM. Board members present are Mr. Jack Bayne, Mr. Kenny Fernandez, Ms. Vicky Morgan, Mr. Fred Roberts, Mr. Nell Sullivan, Ms. Maris Alcachano, and myself, Marshall Kendrick. Board members absent, none. Let the record indicate that a core of our board members present that is meeting during the call, and that no such meeting was posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code 5, Chapter 5, 5-1. The invocation will be given by Mrs. Sullivan and the pledges by Mr. Fernandez.
Could you please stand? Our most gracious heavenly Father, we thank thee for the many blessings of the day and the blessings that you've bestowed upon our district. We pray that you would lead and guide and direct us as we study and review the business of our district, give us wisdom in making the decisions. We pray that you would be with each and every one of our faculty members as they start this year. We pray that you would be with our students and that you would give them open and receptive minds and hearts. Lead and guide and direct us. We ask that you would be with those who protect our country. Lead and guide and direct them as they make decisions that are the right decisions. We pray that you would be with us as we go into the further services of this meeting. Keep us ever in the center of thy will. These things we ask in thy name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And now the Texas flag?
I am the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, one government, one individual.
We will stay here for the policy committee and the update, and then we'll adjourn to a closed session.
Good evening, board members. We sent you guys in your packet update 112. That is a TASB initiated update. It focused on changes to policies related to changes to the Texas Administrative Code or other commissioner decisions that were issued in 2014. You'll notice it's not a whole lot of local policy changes, and it's kind of sporadic. If there's any questions about anything individually, I can answer those. And then we also sent you information related to a local district update 2019.01. That focused on local policy EIE related to grading practices, and Ms. Bennett is here with me if we've got any questions on that. And then you'll also notice the board policy related to public comment. And so I will say that TASB is still working on getting their exact drafts after this legislative session finalized for both local and regulations. And so we are taking action so that we're in compliance with the new legal requirements that go into effect September 1 tonight. But we expect to recommend further clarifications and changes to that policy as TASB finalizes their recommendations and gives those to us in the coming months.
Anybody have any questions along the way to any of this information?
No.
I've got one.
Yes.
EIE local?
Yes.
Page 19.
Mm-hmm.
One, two, three, four, fourth paragraph. Redo an assignment or an assessment to demonstrate mastery?
Mm-hmm.
So if we fail the test, we get to take it again? Have we been doing this normally?
Becky can talk about practice, but yes, I think my understanding is yes. The education code, that's direct language from the education code, is that we are supposed to essentially administer the assessment until we are able to determine mastery.
Okay, so if you don't make it, you get another chance to continue to master.
Right, and they can be subject to discipline and grading reductions, you know, based on the Code of Conduct and other things. But, you know, administration of assessment is supposed to determine mastery, and so that's what we're supposed to be doing.
On that, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Now, what is mastery? Because, for example, you know, my kids have taken, retaken tests, and the highest they can get is a 70.
Right, and so that would be based on a grading reduction or discipline policy that limited the total score that they could receive for it. What we're looking for for mastery purposes is do, did they master the content based on that child's, you know, cognitive level? So even if your child received a 70 on the exam, their mastery may be an A level, but because of whatever reason that the grading reductions were in place, you know, it would have been lower to that 70. But the assessment itself would demonstrate a higher, you know, content mastery level. Am I off on that?
So, I mean, they're taking it, they're having more time to study, more time to prepare, so there's a grading reduction, even though they may show complete mastery that second time around, because they did study, or they studied harder, or they came for tutoring or other opportunities.
That's right. That's pretty good clarification.
As long as they make the 70, that's the key, is that they get over the hump and they get to mastery?
Yes, sir. We want to make sure that if a student is not showing mastery or some level of ability to pass, that we offer a reteach opportunity and then reassess the student to see what they know. And then we can adjust instruction accordingly.
Sure, sure.
If we just cut it off and say, you know, you failed too bad, move on, that's kind of the old way of doing things, but we're looking at how can we intervene and get our kids as far as we can get them. It doesn't mean we just let them retest, 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 till everybody makes 100. It isn't that.
Yeah, I understand, I understand. Thank you very much.
That's a difficult situation. My kids don't.
Kenny was talking about his own grade. Hey, must get back to you there. Question?
Yes.
And I know this came from BD Local regarding to five minutes to three minutes. We used to give five.
We used to give-
Did they change that?
Yes, so in this last legislative session, what the state said essentially is that we have to allow public comment at every board meeting for items that are on the agenda. That's the way that we are interpreting their new legislation, which means where we didn't allow it at special called board meetings, we're going to have to start.
If it's on the agenda.
If it's on, if it's an item on the agenda. And so in doing that, there's been a lot of, you know, discussion amongst, you know, TASB and their officials, CSA Council, school attorneys, and the clients that, you know, those members represent, as well as districts about, you know, if we're not allowed to, if it's required and mandatory for every meeting, and now you cannot take, a board can't take action on an item until those individuals that have properly signed up for public comment have been given an opportunity to speak, that essentially they can, you know, filibuster-
Sure.
-and prevent, you know, a board from taking action. And so moving to three minutes is what TASB is indicating to me that districts have expressed, the majority of districts have expressed as their standard, with the opportunity or the ability of the board president to reduce it to one minute should time and the number of speakers, you know, dictate a situation in which that was necessary.
Okay, in the past, we've always said that you got five minutes, there were three of you that want to talk about the same budget. Pick somebody.
So-
Now you're saying that they get three minutes, and if they have 12 people, we have to give them 12 minutes?
Yes.
Or cut it to one.
Well, each individual would get no more or no less than one minute.
I understand that concept, whether-
But yes, we cannot, based on the new legislation, there's no, my understanding of it at this point is there's no ability to require delegations to appoint a specific person that each individual could sign up to speak.
If they get a minute, period.
If it were a situation, yes, that dictated that, yeah.
But not to exceed 30 minutes, correct?
Well, and so, yes, so that's what our policy has always been, right, is we've limited the public comment portion to no more than 30 minutes. And it would, we would have limited it to whoever signed up first, right? If you were the first six people and each one was a different topic or delegation, then we would have had the full 30 minutes.
Right.
Of course, the board and the president is the person that's over that, has the ability to say 30 minutes at the beginning, and if we don't get them all covered, we'll hear it, you know, we'll push them either to the, before we consider or take action on that item. Remember, because now we have to give them all an opportunity, everybody that signed up for it, to speak at least one minute on an item before a board takes action or deliberates it. So we can hear them at the beginning, or we can postpone action on that made, you know, action on that item, or we can let them speak during, before the board deliberates on that action or takes action.
I understand that speaking before the, the action, I have no problem with that, but I don't see why we would need 30 minutes. If we had 15 people, that's 15 minutes.
Not necessarily.
We mean not necessarily. Well, depending on person.
Well.
That's 15 minutes.
So what we've done in the past is set a maximum of 30.
Yeah, I understand that.
We've said, you know, we will spend no more than 30 minutes on public comment before we start the items of business on this agenda. And so we kept that portion right now. If we want to in future, because I know that we're going to make more changes and edits to this as we're getting them from TASB, if we want to take that limit out and not set a time limit and say we're going to devote 30 minutes to it, then we can do that in the subsequent edits.
No problem, no problem. But now it says you also have to have three hours, they have to sign up before the meeting.
Yes, that was also-
What are you going to do when people don't know that and come in here and they, 30 minutes before the meeting, they sign up and say, we want to sign up, and you say, I'm sorry?
I think we should post it. I think we should communicate it on our website, and they call Susan, communicate it.
Yes.
This is something that's going on in districts around our area, and they're being, you know, told in advance, who's, and when you're talking about multiple, let's say you're going to have 12 speakers on an agenda item, it's relevant for me to be able to tell you as board members, we're going to be here a while, and this is why, we're going to have speakers on this agenda item, or that, whatever agenda item it may be. So it's for preparation, sufficient preparation for the board meeting, with them changing the rules.
And they usually do call, right?
Yes, they usually call Susan and ask how they go about signing up.
And we may, you know, you of course, as a board, would have the authority-
To override that.
-to override that sign up deadline at some point. If you felt like an individual truly wasn't aware based on, you know, the timing of these updates-
I don't follow that, yeah.
Then, you know, we can consider those on a case-by-case basis, always.
We've never really had any abuse in that particular area.
And I would hope that that would be a rare situation, so that everyone would say that we're not being, you know-
Transparent, yeah.
Right.
I don't get that. I don't think I, there, I don't see a problem with that.
I don't want to put the word out there about filibustering the-
Well, we never had any situation, no matter what's been-
I mean, and that's my term, no one's-
Color code or school uniforms or anything else, or changing to one-year contracts. We never had anybody come in here that took that much time in the first place. They sit there, peace, and they get out. So unless something crazy happens in this district, I don't foresee that.
Correct. I mean, we're, part of what we're doing too is looking at how our practices align with other districts in the area and in the state too, and, you know, taking that into consideration. And maybe we're being way more lenient because we haven't had that kind of issue. I would rather, you know, align our practices to other districts now, rather than do it, you know, in response to some sort of issue at that point.
Well, I'm sure some boards do the three hours, they don't listen to anybody.
Well, one of the things that we might do for a couple of months is, you know, just let it be as it is, and tell them that in the future, they need to sign up three hours early, and let that be at the discretion of the president as to whether it has to be-
I think the key is that we put out, like DMS said, let everybody know that this is a, this is a situation, and we can call in and do it that way. But we'll certainly have to be lenient the first couple of meetings to make sure everybody knows.
Right, and so something else that TASB is specifically going to recommend in future policy updates is adding language that specifically says in policy, you know, the board is available to consider your written comments, and those can be submitted, you know, to the board secretary at this address, or by email at theboard@pasadenaisd.com email address. And so even though your ability to speak, you know, orally at a board meeting may be limited to a minute, certainly there are other ways in which you guys, that they can have access to you and that you can consider their written thoughts or their written statements before we make action.
Yeah, we've never been a board that wanted to quellch anybody that had a difference in opinion, or different idea, something new or something they were against. That's what's called transparency. It's what we have to have. So I don't have any problem. Did anybody else? Okay. Should we make a motion on the policy? We'll do that later.
Yeah, we'll take action later.
Okay. No. Thank you, Judy.
No problem.
We want to adjourn to closed session for sure to Texas Government Code, Section 551.074, for the purpose concerning the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer or employee, or clear complaints or charges against a public officer or employee concerning matters related to superintendent's recommendations to hire administration personnel, and/or concerning matters related to superintendent's recommendation related to renewals, non-renewals, and termination of contracts for professional personnel. 551.071, to consult with district attorneys concerning matters on which the attorney needs the district under the Code of Professional Responsibility, clearly conflicts with Texas Open Meetings Act, to seek the advice or return by pending or contemplating litigation or settlement offer, or to consider legal advice regarding items specifically listed in the agenda. 551.072, for the purpose concerning the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property, we will reconvene at 7 o'clock. We will reconvene in open session. First thing we have on the agenda is public hearing on budget and proposed tax increase.
Tax rate.
Tax rate, excuse me.
It's actually a decrease, so.
Good evening. This is our public hearing on the tax rate. We need to set the tax rate, and we have had our notice in the paper for our required 10 days in advance for the meeting. We are dropping our tax rate because currently on the MNO side, it's $1.20, and starting for the new year that we're going to send tax notices out, it will drop down to $1.90. This is because of the compression rate for House Bill 3, and this is our first year to see that it will decrease down to $1.90. So at this time, we're going to open it up to, I mean, and with this tax rate, it does cover our local budget, and so we still have a surplus that we're adding to the local budget this year. But at this time, if we could open it up to any community members that would like to address the board, this is their time to do so.
Do we have anybody here that would like to address either the budget or tax rate at this time? Do a little teacher wait time, give him 60? No, I'm kidding. Anybody, anybody? Okay.
And we will approve the budget later in the financial section.
Thank you. Next item is public hearing on community school. Mr. Swan.
Good evening. Month nine is interesting, but every year the TEA requires that we have an open hearing on the approval of the optional flexible school day program for community school. And that's what this is for tonight. If anybody has anything that they would like to say about community school or any questions. More wait time. But I would like to present some statistics that I think the board will appreciate tonight. I'm asking Jennifer Capra if she would please do that.
Thank you.
Good evening. We want to communicate with you some information about the success of community school that you might not be aware of, because it's hard to pull statistics on our campus. So just to give you some perspective, our campus opened 10 years ago, this is our 10th year, in 2010, and that year we had 56 students graduate from community school. As of 2017, 2018 school year, we had 174 graduates. And as of the end of this last school year, we accomplished 230 graduates. And we hit a graduation rate, we hit a graduation rate of 83% of enrollment. That's for some of the most at-risk students in the district. Furthermore, just to throw some extra in there, at the 2019 summer graduation, there were 96 graduates slated to walk. Of those, 54 of them were students who had either been enrolled in or finished through community school, or finished their graduation requirements through our summer school program. So, thank you all.
Total graduates? Total graduates for the 10 years?
We're over 1,500.
Wow.
That's amazing.
We provided a new future and a new life for those kids, and I thank y'all.
Special recognition tonight?
Yes, we do, we do. We're often running with a new school year, but we want to recognize some outstanding 2019 Texas State Solo and Ensemble Contest outstanding performers. So tonight, we will honor two of our high school students for competing in the 2019 Texas State Solo and Ensemble Contest in Austin. And Linda Fletcher, of course, needs no introduction, our director of fine arts, will say a few words about the competition and our students.
Thank you, Dr. Powell. Mr. Kendrick, the board members, I appreciate you allowing me the time to recognize these wonderful young men. We all know the importance of fine arts, and it's not a frill. It's important to these students, to our district, to our community, and to this wonderful board. Music builds many, many skills for our students, and fine art students learn to create, they learn to collaborate, they learn to problem solve, perseverance, collaboration, and accountability. On June 1st this summer, 25,000 band choir and orchestra students went to state solo and ensemble contest in, at UT in Austin. And only students that receive a Division 1, which is the highest you can make in solo and ensemble, and on a Class 1 solo, which is the hardest solos to learn and to perform, are allowed to go to the state competition. Joshua and Julian earned a Division 1 rating at the state contest and were selected as outstanding performers. Only 2% to 3% of those 25,000 musicians who performed at the Texas State Solo and Ensemble Contest earned this distinguished honor, being recognized as an outstanding performer. So tonight, we recognize from Pasadena ISD, Dobie High School student who is graduating and majoring in, going to major in music and be a choir director. Dear to my heart is Joshua Cox. Joshua, did you come? His teachers are Wendy Sharpe and Tyler Rubberg, and I appreciate his assistant principal, Mr. Clinton Hopper, sitting in the back for attending also. And Joshua, are any of your parents or family friends here tonight? If they are, would you please stand so we can thank you and recognize you. Our next young gentleman, Joshua is graduating. Like I said, he's maj, he's going to Saint Jacenter, the University of Houston, he just said, to major in music and be, he wants to be choir director. From South Houston High School, a junior is Julian Chavez. Julian, would you please come forward? His directors are Brenda Varvatos and Courtney Howard. Courtney, would you please stand? We recognize. And the whole cadre, Ms. Andrea Winkie, the principal, and her cadre, all, many assistant principals in the background. Thank you all for coming. We congratulate Joshua and Julian from South Houston and Dobie for this achievement of musical excellence.
And parents for Julian?
Parents, I'm so sorry, for Julian. Any parents from Julian? And family. Thank you so much. Well, we're excited to see all the student achievements this year, and Linda, we know you'll be back to celebrate more this year as we continue through the school year. So thank you. And that's all we have for now.
Thank you. That's fantastic. Now, we have, next item is public comments, of which we have none tonight. Next agenda is consent agenda.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan, second by Mrs. Sullivan. Any comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, no. Motion passes. Personnel section. Ms. Keanu.
Mr. President, I move that we approve Personnel Addendums A through C.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Keanu, second by Mrs. Morgan. Any comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, no. Motion passes.
I'd like to introduce our first new Personnel section. I'd like to welcome to Pasadena ISD is Ms. Valerie Torres French. Welcome to Pasadena ISD. You are the new counselor for South Houston Intermediate, and you come from Portland ISD. Well, welcome to Pasadena. Do you have any family with you this evening you'd like to introduce?
First, my sister, and my daughter, my mother, and my other two daughters, Seena and Lina.
Next, there's a big congratulations to our new behavioral health specialist, is not new to Pasadena ISD, Ms. Oraleva Riva.
Keep standing. Go ahead, keep standing.
Welcome. You are from San Raben High School. So do you have any family with you this evening?
I do. I have my husband, my mom, and my uncle.
All right. Congratulations to you. Congratulations to our new assistant principal at Malillo Middle School, who comes from Fred Roberts Middle School, is Ms. Jennifer Saucena.
I have my husband here, John, my son Brandon, who attends Laura Bush Elementary, my son Andrew, who attends Bondi Intermediate, my brother-in-law, Juanita. I want to thank Ms. Harold for supporting our campus and for supporting us here, my principal, Mr. Jorley Thomas, and the rest of my Adriater family. I also have here Ms. Christine Puffage, there she is, I can find her, Principal Williams Elementary, Adriana Robinson from Dobie Mine. I also have here today my Malillo family, Ms. Vila, Mr. Vila, and the rest of my St. family. And last but not least, Mr. Fred Roberts. I want to thank you for always making me feel like me.
That was beautiful. As you can see, we're all a big family here, so welcome. Congratulations to all of you. Thank you.
Congratulations. Now, if anybody would like to sneak out and not stay for the business meeting, you're starting to work to do so. Give you a few minutes to do so. You leaving? Fred, leave him in. Hey, Jorley.
Put a plate on the plate.
Doesn't work.
That's what happens when you create great people.
That's right. At least I can say a fourth of us.
You got to share the wealth.
That's true. That's what you want to do, is fly, right?
That's right.
Could somebody tell Mr. Svejager where he's supposed to sit? All right, there you go. We'll get on to the meeting. Item 2, consideration of possible approval of reclassification of internal auditor AO2 to Financial Compliance Audit Coordinator, AO2 reporting to Chief Financial Officer.
Somebody, second.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan, second by Mr. Fernandez. Any comments or questions?
The board members, we had discussed looking at models across region 4 and other districts, and we, of course, appreciated all of the efforts Maritza made with her department, and she's moved on to bigger and better things, but thankfully here in PISD. So we looked at some of the departments and big budgets, like fuel, construction budgets, and other, the energy management that we're working with right now, and some areas of audit. So this person will still come back and make reports to you and work with me as well, but we're going to move him over to our business office so that we can have constant communication, and when we have areas of need, we can focus on that and get the training out and the correction action plans in place quickly, and then report back to you on those as well.
Thank you. Did we vote? Did we vote?
No.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, no. Motion passes. Consideration possible for the Aetna contract renewal for 2020 CSP number sixteen dash oh-two-eight.
Some move. Second.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan, second by Mrs. Sullivan. Any comments or questions?
I have a question. This is the last year on this, is that correct? And then it will possibly go out for RFP next year? That's correct? Okay.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion passes. Consideration, let's see, we have certified personnel, support personnel for information only, Education Section, consideration possible for general waivers from the Texas Virtual School Network Course Review Process for passive virtual school courses time, excuse me, courses, time to.
Some move. Second.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan, second by who?
Second.
Ms. Kehana, Kehano, excuse me. Any comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, no. Motion passes. Consideration possible for the ongoing subscription with Texas State Library and Archives Commission for the 2019-2020 school year.
Some move.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan, second by Mr. Hernandez. Any comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, no. Motion passes. Consideration possible for inter-local agreement with Region Four Education Service Center, ESC Four, for the purchase of one data suite software.
Some move. Second.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan, second by Mrs. Sullivan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, no. Motion passes. Consideration possible for the Texas Education Agency Grant Award.
Some move. Second.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan, second by Mrs. Sullivan. Any comments or questions? Always ready to get the award.
Yep.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, no. Motion passes. Consideration possible for the Modified Environmental Defense Fund, EDF, grant award in the amount of six hundred and thirty-three dollars, and the approval of the corresponding amended EDF grant agreement.
Some move. Second.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan, second by Mr. Hernandez. Any comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No. Close, no. Motion passes. Consideration possible for San Raven High School Renegade Theater troupe to travel to New York City, New York, June two through five, 2020.
Some move. Second.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan, second by Mrs. Sullivan. Any comments or questions?
Great opportunity.
I hope they have a wonderful time.
Sounds like a great, great opportunity. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, no. Motion passes. Through the achievement, we're working on a manner because we just started. Policy section, consideration possible adoption of Tasbe Local Policy Update 112 affecting local policies designated on the attached instruction sheet.
Some move. Second.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan, second by Mrs. Sullivan. Any comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, no. Motion passes. Consideration possible adoption of local district update two oh-one-nine dot, oh, excuse me, two oh-one-nine point oh-one affecting BED local and EIA local.
Some move.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan, second by Mr. Hernandez. Any comments or questions? What's your name, or, Hernandez? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, no. Motion passes. As you get over, you can't talk as well. Consideration possible for budget amendments.
I move that we approve the budget amendments. Second.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan, second by Mrs. Sullivan. Any comments or questions regarding budget amendments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, no. Motion passes. Consideration possible for budget amendments, August.
Some move. Second.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan, second, no, Ms. Kehana, second by Mrs. Sullivan. Any comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, no. Motion passes. Consideration possible for GASB five-four fund bonds resolutions.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Hernandez, second by Mrs. Sullivan. Comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, no. Motion passes. Consideration possible for additional funding for PISD medical plan.
Some move. Second.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan, second by Mrs. Sullivan. Any comments or questions?
Well, last year, as you know, we put about an additional eight point five million toward our medical plan, and we made some changes to our deductibles, our premiums, things of that nature. And those changes went into effect January first of nineteen, so we've had since then to see any benefit. So now that we need to close out, it looks like instead of eight point five, we're asking for five million. So in taking that into consideration for this new budget that you're about to approve, we took the amount that the school district will contribute up to two ninety-five, that's fifty dollars per employee, which should equal five million dollars. So we're very hopeful that barring some extreme cases, which we know we'll have some, but any major outstanding cases that we will balance out next year. That is the goal always, but again, we're planning for that in the budget this year, rather than coming to you and asking for additional money separate from the budget.
Thank you. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, no. Motion passes. Consideration possible approval of resolution concerning PISD four fifty-seven voluntary retirement savings plan.
Some move. Second.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan, second by Mrs. Sullivan. Any comments or questions?
I think it's a great idea.
Any other? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, no. Motion passes. Consideration possible for adoption of 2019-2020 budget.
I move that we approve the adoption of the 2019-20 school budget. Second.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan, second by Mr. Roberts. Come on down there, Fred. Any comments or questions?
There have been very few changes since you saw it last time.
I just want to thank administration for the hard work. I know many, many hours have been put into this, and a lot of thought and consideration for the betterment of our district and the things that we can do to be the most successful, and I certainly do appreciate all the hard work.
And it's been an interesting year. I mean, you think about the first template came out at Memorial Day weekend, and we're now on template eight, and we're not sure that will be our last. In fact, we don't believe it will. But all along the way, Carla's been very vigilant about having our numbers checked by Tasbe and Moken Casey. We've gone to trainings, we've been to Austin, so we're not just relying on putting the numbers in and hoping for the best. We're comparing continuously, and as changes come, and which they may, if we're on template eight, and there may be further ones, we'll keep you updated of any new additional information that we get from the state.
Well, I'm proud too of the fact that this is one of the first years that we've actually done, had at least a major attempt at zero-based budgeting. And I know that was a change. I know that it probably, like any change, has met with some concerns, and, but I think y'all have done a tremendous job, and I appreciate the job that's been done, and I'm excited about what we've been able to do for teachers and for staff. I think that it's well deserved, and I'm just excited.
We feel good about the work. I mean, it was, it was last minute, it seemed, you know, because we would have liked to have been informed sooner, but it is what it is, and it's, House Bill Three is a step in the right direction.
Oh, absolutely.
It's not the answer, and it's not the long-term fix. As we all know, we don't know what we face after next year, but it's definitely a step in a more positive direction.
Well, it's a great step forward for this legislature for a change, and it's great that we can reward a great family of people that work so hard for our kids, and it's just really nice that we can do that. They're doing a wonderful job. Any other comments? Have we passed this yet?
No.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, no. Motion passes. Consideration possible for adoption of 2019 tax rate.
I move we approve the tax rate for 2019. Second.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan, second by Mrs. Sullivan. Any comments or questions? All opposed? All afores?
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion passes. Consideration possible for resolution concerning investment policy, investment strategy review.
Some move. Second.
Motion by Mrs. Sullivan, second by Mrs. Morgan. Any comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, no. Motion passes. Consideration possible for renewal of interlocal agreement with Tasbe as third-party administrator for workers' compensation, 2019-2020.
Some move. Second.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan, second by Mrs. Sullivan. Any comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, no. Motion passes. Operations section, consideration possible for transfer of 2011 bond program unused project funds to the bond contingents approved.
Some move. Second.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan, second by Mrs. Kehano. Any comments or questions?
I thought we did that a long time ago.
Kevin, we hadn't done this one yet, correct? We're trying, like I had said earlier, we're trying to settle up on a lot of these before the changes of having to have the additional meeting.
Correct. Yeah, we just have projects that we're doing final reconciliation on. We bring them as we do them.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, no. Motion passes. Consideration possible for continuation of bond projects and funding for the 2014 bond contingency.
Some move. Second.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan, second by Mrs. Sullivan. Any comments or questions?
This was an overage required by our fire marshal, which now we're building into our projects, because this isn't the only one we've been asked to do.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, no. Motion passes. Consideration possible for allowance expenditure authorization, AEA number point oh-two, for the New Red Bull Elementary Replacement Project.
Some move. Second.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan, second by Mrs. Sullivan. Any comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, no. Motion passes. Consideration possible for change order number point oh-oh-two for the South Houston High School Science Lab renovation project.
Some move. Second.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan, second by Mrs. Sullivan. Any comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, no. Motion passes. Consideration possible for the NLLX formally NOC Demand Response Service Agreement Renewal.
Some move. Second.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan, second by Mrs. Sullivan. Any comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, no. Motion passes. Construction update. Any comments or questions? We have no additional comments for tonight. May the next term, May September twenty-fourth.
Yes, sir. Question. Can I ask a question back at the budget, and it doesn't need to be voted on or anything, but is there anything additional that the superintendent has to add that's in the budget? The deal's.
Yeah. Excitingly.
Well, I was going to say, I thought we passed over that, and I think it's a pretty neat deal, and I think.
In addition to the raises that all of our employees got in each group, most of the raises that y'all graciously approved this summer, you now, by approving this budget, will allow for a two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar retention bonus for every employee who was here last year and is still here at Christmas time. So it's a little extra change in the pocket, and what I've been telling staffs, I've gone out and talked to them, is, you know, it's a separate check, so if you don't want to tell your husband or your wife, I mean, hey, you know, it's a separate check.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Just a little extra, little extra thank you.
Hey, you know what? I think that's great. I think it's great. Because everybody can use a little extra money at that time of year, and I think y'all worked your hearts out, and you're not only given a good raise, but that little extra two-hundred-and-fifty dollars is, I hope everybody appreciates it, and I'll wear an extra-large shirt. You know, whatever. Now you have tie, you have a tie, Ben, I have a tie jacket.
Oh, my gosh.